Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the school committee meeting to order today being a budget review session. We are starting at 5:43. I wanted to thank all of our principals that are here today, and Tom Rozignol, who is here from the city council, and I know he misses us at the school committee. Why don't I just turn it over to you, Ms. Murtagh?
Do you have to do point of allegiance or anything?
What's that?
Do you have to do the point of allegiance?
Yes, we should. Could everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would first like to, there's an obligation that I have as the superintendent to, the superintendent will recommend or continuation or discontinuation of the contract to four kids only by today, April 30th. So my recommendation is the continuation of four kids only before and after school program. This contract does not go up until August 31st, so there'll be negotiating time within that timeframe, but I would recommend, my recommendation would be to continue the program in our elementary schools.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Murtagh. We'll open that up to the committee members. Mr. Huckman?
Just the motion to follow the recommendation of Superintendent.
Second.
Per the motion to follow the recommendation of Superintendent Murtagh, seconded by Ms. Carpenter, open it up. Any discussion, comments? Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to begin negotiations after notifying FKO, you know, for the next contract.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
You've heard the motion by Mr. Huckman. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
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 Now moving into budget?
Yep.
So, thank you for that, and now I'm going to move into budget. About a week ago, I presented a $6.5 million increase to our FY '20 budget due to special increase in tuition at district placement, obligations and regulations that we have with foster care and homeless transportation that have increased, and also healthcare costs. So tonight I was asked by the school committee to present the first possible reductions to you for the FY '20 budget. So that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to pass this out. There is one error that we saw on the way over, and we could not do that, so Ms. LaFleur took care of business, but it is written in.
Motion received.
So, the first thing I just want to say is that understanding this budget and analyzing this budget and addressing this budget are three very different things. So, the big thing is, is that we look at this together and make, as I present, you make decisions for the best, that best suits our students. So the first thing that I have on the list is the revenue increases that I have to ask the school committee, something that I'm proposing to you, is to increase bus passes. Currently, it's $300 per student, $600 family cap. I'm asking to raise that to $325 per student, $650 cap. I'm asking to increase athletic fees from $150 per student to 300 family cap, to $175 per student to $350 per cap, and to increase preschool tuition at the McCarthy preschool, $250 per student. So those are the revenue increases there. That would come out to $50,000. The PBD alternative night school, my recommendation right now would be to decrease it by 50%. So what I mean by that is we would watch students the first half of the year with credit recovery and things that we currently have at the high school in the PBD Learning Academy, and if we have to put that back in place, which we would in January, watching students' progress, growth, or lack thereof, and assist them in January, moving forward to get them the credits they need. And we'll monitor that, we'll progress monitor that. So that's something that I'm recommending there. At the high school, I'm recommending to reduce five teachers at the high school, and I'm also looking at three department head stipends to consolidate and give those duties to other departments or other people. At the elementary level, I'm looking to decrease, oh, sorry, I'm going to back to the department heads, because we will increase a .5 teacher if that is done. It will give us another .5 teacher to work with. The library paraprofessionals at the elementary level, that is reduction I'm looking to give to you. The, there are three attendance paraprofessionals at the high school. I'm looking to reduce two, and we will have a centralized location for the attendance paraprofessional. This one, the next one that I'm recommending is these three ELL teachers are currently in the operating budget. I would move that to the Title I grant, so it's a saving in the operating budget of $191,000. At the Higgins Middle School, I'm looking to reduce the library media specialist and a foreign language teacher. In the contract, there is a position of a technology integration specialist. I'm looking to not hire that person for next year. Also, the kindergarten coordinator. We are so fortunate to have our kindergarten coordinator, but she has notified us that she will be retiring, and therefore, after retirement, we will not fill that position. Clarical, we're looking to reduce central office clerks to 19.5 hour positions, two of them. District-wide, I'm looking at eight special education paraprofessionals district-wide. This is non-staff. So, for non-staff, we're looking to reduce before and after school program stipends at the elementary level, which would be $8,000. Before-school program supplies, which would be the box program, would be $20,500. Mobi-Max is a supplemental program that all elementary schools use. It's a homeschool connection, and it's great for acceleration or remediation. And Mobi-Max, I was able to utilize funding this year in a grant to pay for it for next year, and I am doing that now, so that will save us a cost savings of $27,000. There is a program called TestWiz that we will reduce. And, is it still going? Okay, yes. At the middle school, elementary schools and middle school, reducing all extracurricular and intermurals. Two custodians, one custodian. So currently, the Carroll and the Brown School have three custodians. I would reduce that to two custodians at each school and then share one, so it would be 2.5 at each of the schools. That would allow us to reduce one FTE, and there'll also be a retirement and, no, someone leaving, and so that would be another opening, and I would just not fill that. The vocational director, I'm looking at a .6 instead of a 1.0. At the elementary level, I'm looking to reduce two elementary teachers, classroom teachers, and at the elementary level, I'm looking to reduce the instrumental music program for fifth grade. In fifth grade, we'll have general ed music, and instrumental will start here in middle school in sixth grade. So that is just a review of the first, let me something, oh, one big thing that I, was a very creative idea, is at the high school, the seniors are out shortly, so we could save in substitutes for one month that the teachers who teach senior classes could cover instead of getting substitutes, and that would be a cost savings of $7,500. So that is our first round of possible reductions.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Murtagh, and open that up for any comments or questions on any of these items. Ms. Carpenter?
Through the chair, Ms. Murtagh. Through the chair to Ms. Murtagh. Thank you for your list. I know it was very difficult to consider a lot of these. I know that we're going to have a lot of discussion regarding many of the items that are listed here, and moving forward, I think at this point, we still would need the mayor's number so that we can see actually, you know, how much of this we have to consider, and probably some time to process. So I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, how do you want us to continue and ask questions about these reductions, or are we still in a position where we're waiting for some more information, or how are we going to move forward with this meeting? Because I could ask a lot of questions, but I don't know where we're at right now.
Well, certainly, I think now is the time to start asking questions. From my perspective, I can tell you where we are. We've been presented with a $6.5 million increase. We cannot reach that number. That does not include the city side. We have approximately $165 million budget citywide. Approximately half is for the schools. $6.5 million requested increase for the schools. That does not include police, fire, DPW, our library, all of our operations in the city. We're going through those budgets now. I have meetings this week and next week with, second and third meetings with our police chief, fire chief, our DPW department, some city hall staff as well, to try to continue to work on their budgets. My feeling has always been the investments that I've always supported and tried to push have been education and public safety. Every year, this is a challenge. Every year, I say the same thing. It's a challenge, and I'm always optimistic and hope that the next year is better. This year, we were hit with, again, things we knew were coming, and then other things that we had no idea that were coming until a few weeks ago, a couple of months ago. Big increases this year is the six-plus percent increase in health insurance citywide. We've negotiated just about all of our city unions. I always feel that a 2% increase, cost of living adjustment is warranted and has been earned by our employees, and that's been included. The teachers are a bit different, because you add in steps and lanes, which oftentimes increases it significantly more than 2%. But again, those have been negotiated, and those have been earned by our educators. Other increases, again, have just retirement costs that go up several hundred thousand per year, water and sewer increases, and the vocational school, again, is a significant investment on our city that we've just been notified. Eighty-nine students have been admitted. Now, they haven't accepted, but they've been admitted into the Essex Tech Vocational Technical School. We've been averaging about 75 to 80 per class, but those have been a significant increase. We do not include that in our school budget, but I do. I consider that an investment in education. Again, I did not support going into that school. I think we could have done it in better ways, investing in our own community, but that decision was made before I was mayor. But that is a significant investment and a significant increase that we have to pay every year, and that only goes up every year. So, again, budget stresses. To give you kind of a perspective, it's $40 to $45 per million, $40 to $45 increase to our average taxpayer. Per million, we go up on the budget. So right now, I am at $10 million plus, including both sides, city and school, and that is not manageable and cannot work for our city. So we're in a position where we have to look internal, to look at our budget. This year, the special ed costs have exploded beyond anything I think we've seen recently. We're going to, we're looking at a million to a million point five, $1.5 million increase in special ed alone over last year, over $500,000 in transportation costs that were transferred from state budget to city budget to take care of our homeless population and our foster care students, and then again, the increases to health insurance, which we needed to correct on our school budget that was unanticipated. So we have, we got some real issues here, and these are not conversations I'm just having with the schools. These are with every department, and they're difficult discussions, difficult decisions. I appreciate Ms. Murtagh presenting this and working on this along with her leadership team, and I know it's painful for them as well, but we're in a position where we can't match these numbers, and we have to look internal and have to be creative as a group. I know we have a number of meetings coming up, and we'll have to continue to work, but I don't have a specific number for you yet. I am meeting next Thursday with the city council, and I'm trying to gauge where they are on their support of tax increase, because there will be one because of these costs, and I need to kind of gauge where they are and what they may support for not only the school investment, but on the city side, police, fire, DPW, our library, our health department, all the different city departments. So, not pleasant meetings, but our numbers continue to go down at the high school, and I think that has to be a focus of ours, is to look at the high school, my feeling. I want to try to minimize the impact as much as possible on our elementary schools and on the middle school, but our numbers continue to go down. Our high school now is lower than our middle school in terms of total population, and so I think that has to be a focus for us. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So I guess I'll just start off by saying, a lot of these things are definitely, you know, things that are going to be very hard for us to discuss and to consider, and this in no way reflects on you, Ms. Murtagh. I know that you're trying to put, give us some suggestions on some reductions, and I know that they're difficult. And while I recognize that some of these would definitely be a hard no for me, there are some others that I would like some further explanation to consider. And while we're on the topic of the high school, could you explain to me the five teaching reductions and how that would look and how we would compensate for it, or if we even need to, given the fact that there's such a reduction in class, students there?
A little bit of both?
Yes.
And I can't give you an exact answer tonight, because we're still doing the tally marks for classes and choice of, the kids are choosing their classes. However, I can let you know that foreign language is an area that we are looking at because of the number of students in those classes. But we're going class by class. We now have a different program, Aspen, to help us and assist us in that. So we are looking, but as we look through and make sure, because we have to schedule students, we have to make sure. But I will get back to you in further meetings. Hopefully, next week, I will have those specifics for you, but we are still tallying and trying to get you the answers as quickly as possible.
Okay, and just, while I still have it, for a second. The library paras?
Yes.
So those, those are for all the elementary schools?
Yes, they're currently 12-hour positions.
So would this be us basically closing our libraries in the schools?
And get volunteers, yes.
Using volunteers.
Correct.
We have been there before, Ms. Murtagh.
Yes.
I do recall.
Yes, we have.
Being there before. This isn't a new idea or something that we haven't done. It wasn't the greatest, but we did pull through, and then we were able to get them back, and unfortunately, they're on the page again. So I think most of my questions are going to center around the teaching reductions, just to see how that's going to look.
Mm-hmm.
How we're going to manage that. So it sounds like you'll have those answers later, because you're still going through that?
At the high school scheduling, yes.
Okay.
And same thing with the elementary reductions, the two that are in the, it's all based on enrollment. That is the thing.
Right.
And there are two classes that I'm watching closely at two different schools, so that's where the possible reductions are there.
Okay. I'll yield for now, just to get going. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Thank you, Mr. Huckman.
Yeah, thank you. I think Ms. Carpenter is right. We're not going to get really too deep into the meat and bones of this, but while we're here and receiving this, and I also thank Ms. Murtagh and the leadership team for putting this together and the first iteration of what at least is possible, and I'm sure we're going to see several versions of this, and we'll work through it. We do every year, and it's not easy for you as a leader of our school district to put this forward. It's difficult for you. I understand that. It's not difficult, it's not easy for our principals who work so hard day after day, keeping kids safe and academically sound and athletically sound and emotionally sound, to hear that there's going to be some difficult times in the future. But we'll get through what we do every year. If I may, through the mayor to Mr. LaFleur, I just have a question. We're kind of working through the first budget that you've put on paper for us, so, and I don't know if there's differences from what we've seen in the past and what you have put forward, so I'm just going to ask you a couple of questions, only because I want to make sure I'm reading what I'm reading, I guess. So just for example, if we go to, I just happened to be on the Burke section two of the budget, and I'm looking at salary lines. So if I look at line, yeah, I'll say the third line down. I don't know, how are we going to, there's a lot of digits there, which I don't know that I'm accustomed to.
Kindergarten salary?
Right. Is there, so first of all, in going through this, because we're going to be going through the, is there a way of identifying lines that you prefer, so that we kind of all have an understanding, or we'll just go third line on the page?
The script is fine.
Okay. Kindergarten salary line. I see that there's two FTEs, and I understand that to mean that there's two full-time positions for the kindergarten classrooms at the Burke School, and then I go down to the sixth line in the chart, which is general instruction teachers, and I see that we have 12 FTEs. And I just want to be clear that that's 12 full-time positions from grades, for grades one, two, three, four, and five.
Correct. Full-time equivalent.
Okay, right. And so, to read this, that there are 14 teachers within that building, kindergarten through grade five. All right. I just want to make sure that I'm reading this right, and I know in years past, we've had, although we do have enrollment charts with current enrollment and projected enrollment, we in the past had received number of teachers per grade level as well, so that we can kind of look at what class sizes looked like. So, and I don't see that in the book, and I may be missing something.
We can add it.
Okay, so it's not, yeah, so if you can, even if you just added a column perhaps to the charts for enrollment, so we can have it all in one place, just so we can kind of take a look, and at some point, you know, I know I looked, I didn't look at all the elementary schools, but I see the, there are some schools, the Burke, the Brown, the Carroll, that have some more inclusionary special education classrooms, so maybe reasons for smaller class sizes or higher staff levels ratios, and I understand that, but I don't have that information right now, so if we can maybe get that, so that when we do start talking. I mean, we're, assuming we're talking about the big delta that is before us, while we could talk about increasing user fees by $25 a person, that's really not going to, those aren't going to be budget drivers. I mean, what we're looking at is some bigger items that we may need to consider and discuss. So while we're doing that, if I can, we can get all the information, at least the information that I think is pertinent to make those decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman.
Through the chair. Thank you, Ms. Murtagh, and thank you, Ms. LaFleur, for preparing this budget book. I know it was an extremely challenging task to handle, but this is more, I guess, on interpretation issue. I was going through the book the last couple of days, and under special education, if we could turn to that tab, I believe it's 17, and I'm looking at the speech therapist line, and I'm looking actually the detail behind, behind that budgeted figure for 2000, fiscal year 2020. So that would be on the second page in the binder, and I see, okay, FY '20, you know, full-time equivalent, and I see 1.0 on the first person, but then I see .60, and the salaries are the same. Wouldn't the .60 be a lower salary?
It should be. That's a typo. I apologize.
And I saw that consistently. There was a handful of those, so that could be some savings right there.
Thank you. We'll check on that. Plus, it also depends on stepping grade and depending on where they are, but not of that capacity. So thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I could go into detail with some other line items at a, you know, at a further point, but I think I'd like to get more information as we go forward. But that's all for now. I'll yield to somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBeal. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Ms. Murtagh. The three department head stipends, what are those stipends for?
One would be to move one of the departments into another department, so combine two departments. So I'm looking at the art department into performing arts with the director of performing arts, that group into the director of performing arts. So that would be a K-12, because Mr. Simmons has all of art and music, K-12, well, K-8 right now. That would be a combo, and then I would be looking at moving the health and PE coordinators back into full-time teaching positions, instead of doing the coordination piece of it.
Okay. And then, on the library, sorry, where did I see it? Teacher, library media here at the Higgins. Is that the librarian that we currently have?
Yes.
So there'd be no librarian for this program whatsoever?
No. There would be, they would make this a digital media center.
We don't have that position now, right?
We have a digital learning coach, and we have the IT department. That's what we currently have, and that, they're live positions.
Who would do the duties of the current librarian?
We would have students, and we would have Mr. Bucy and I would talk about that.
Did we wipe out that? I noticed already that we are taking out the library paraprofessionals at the elementary school, that the funding for library books has been removed as well. Would we remove funding for library books here at the Higgins?
They have a lot of the online, they have an online budget. A lot of the kids can access it on their Chromebooks. A lot of the books in this library, on their Chromebooks.
Yeah, but it would mean no, no books coming into the library, no one to order books or to maintain the current collection?
Correct.
Or to take care of any of the presentations where the students learn how to do research and all of the things that they actually learn in the library?
Right, we'd probably move that to digital literacy, a digital learning coach.
Is a digital learning coach qualified to teach the research for students?
Depending on their degree. So, so currently, the question that you asked would be, no one, it would be right here, per se, to teach those lessons.
Okay. The kindergarten coordinator, the savings for that, were you saying, would the kindergarten coordinator work half a year and then leave? Is that what you were saying with the retirement?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Yes.
The coordinator would be on duty to get us through the beginning of the year?
Correct.
Okay. And that's a position that won't be filled after that?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, and then on the vocational director, it would be a part-time person?
Correct.
Would they be a part-time teaching position or part-time administrator?
Part-time administrator.
Will chapter 74 cover that?
I'm working on that, and with our programming, I hope they will, the five programs, I'm hoping.
Yeah, I don't know if they cover, okay, and then eliminate the instrumental music at the elementary school?
Mm-hmm.
That's, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, Mr. Arnottis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the preschool tuition?
Yes.
What is it currently?
Okay, it's different, it ranges depending on how many days the student attends, so currently, if they attend five days, it's 28.75, if they attend four days, it's 23.75, if they attend three days, it's 18.25, and if they attend two days, it's 14.25.
And that 250 increases across the board regardless of how many days you go?
Correct.
And this may be a foolish question, but the attendance paras, are those district-wide or are those located at certain schools, where are those?
Only at the high school.
Oh, thanks. And then my other question for now, the foreign language French teacher at the Higgins, how many would that leave us with, do we know, would it leave us with any French teachers or?
I believe, one.
So we have two and we'd go down to one?
Correct. I believe that's, I believe I'm right on that.
No, that's just for French.
Let me just, just for French, yeah, let me just double check, I just want to be, I want to be correct, I want to be accurate. And I should know of that off the top of my head, and I don't. Does we have Spanish, Italian, French? Actually, that's the only one.
So we wouldn't be able to offer French in that case?
Correct.
How many teachers do we have in the other languages? Are there any doubles?
Yes, Spanish is our highest populated, chosen by students?
Yeah.
And then we have one Italian, we have three Spanish, one Italian, and one French.
Would it be possible to look at keeping French and, I don't know, making Spanish maybe 2.5 or going down to two just so we still have French available?
We can take a look at that, but I will ask for enrollment figures, that's why it would be.
Yeah, I guess that would be what it comes down to, but I just wouldn't want to, you know, completely knock out a language, but.
Right, I will definitely check on that for you.
Thank you, I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Arnottis, Mr. Amico?
Thank you, through the chair, Ms. Murtagh, do you have a projected enrollment for the high school?
For next year, yes.
Is it in our past?
It's at the beginning, yeah.
Has it changed?
I want to say 14.39, do you have that number on me? 14.39, I think.
And also on your projected cuts to custodians?
Yes.
You said you'd go from four to 2.5 and share one custodian through two buildings?
Correct. Do you have that number, 14, do you have that number that I gave you?
I was looking for.
I left that folder on my desk.
I have 14.21?
14.21.
That was as of February 26, 2019. I don't know if that's going to be adjusted because of the larger number than expected students that were enrolled in the Essex Tech. And our middle school is 14.40, so, I think it's for the first time our high school is lower than the middle school. Okay, any other thoughts, Mrs. Dunn?
Could you just give the figure again for the high school, what we have here is, FY '19 enrollment is 14.55, and the projected enrollment for next year is 14.55, so I'm just trying to.
So I have the enrollment figure, this is just what was presented to me, February 26, 2019, high school 14.21, middle school 14.40. I'm not sure if there's an updated one.
Yes, there is.
Okay.
I know it changes day to day.
The book was put together February 14.
I'm so sorry, it is right here, I knew I had it somewhere, it was just in a different spot, I do apologize, so, as of April 24, the most current is 14.11 at the high school, at the middle school is 14.37. Currently, we have enrolled in our, in our entire school, just 6,067 students. That's pre-K to 12.
Just quick, which, under the non-staff section, was the instrumental at the high school? I mean, not at the high school, at the elementary, sorry about that.
At the elementary?
Yeah.
It is, at the second page, last one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at, thank you.
All set? Yeah, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you. On the non-staff cuts, the elementary extracurricular, the intermurals, and extracurricular, is that going to take all K-8 extracurricular out of the budget?
Yes.
Everything, so, none of the after-school clubs, none of the after-school sports?
Correct.
Okay, and then on the, the paraprofessionals, the eight full-time equivalents, isn't that something where we really have no, no way of knowing how many paraprofessionals we will need until all the IEPs are completed next year?
Yes, and we're working on, we're working on that now, currently, and we're shifting things, who's graduated, who's not graduated, who's moving on, who's not coming back, who has graduated from the program, so we're working on that now.
Okay.
So that is a projected proposal for you.
And the attendance proposals, I'm sorry, the attendance paraprofessionals at the high school, with the concern about the attendance policy and these attendance procedures at the high school, how, is the only duty those paraprofessionals have is to monitor attendance, or what type of, what is their job duty and how will that be covered?
So, we would have, this is, we've had discussion around this, and it's not their only duty, however, the dean would, the dean would take on some of the other duties, but there would have, be a centralized location for the attendance paraprofessional, and the students would, we haven't figured that out yet because this is just a proposal, but one location for students to check in late, check in, and then that, that attendance paraprofessional would reach out to the deans to let them know what is going on, and to the assistant principal and principal.
And with the attendance procedures, is anything going to improve with Aspen as far as the attendance in the morning?
It's much quicker, and it's period-to-period attendance, so everything is electronic, and it's very quick, we don't have to bring the attendance down, drop it off, it is much quicker.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments at this time, questions? I'll open it up to Mr. Huckman.
Yeah, just, to the extent that you know, Mr. Mayor, do you have any expectation as to when we can, you'll be able to formulate a number so that we can understand what we're really looking at here?
I'm hoping, that's why I wanted, I asked for, I asked to meet with the city council because of the concerns I had about the budget, so, I'm on for May 9 to go to the city council and speak to them, and I'm going to just ask for some assistance or guidance in terms of what they may support, and then go and kind of work from there, but with these cuts, that brings us to 5 million, and I'm not anywhere near 5 million.
Yeah.
So, there's, there's more to come, certainly, I don't think the council would be supportive of that, and I kind of want to get a sense from them what they would be supportive of.
I'm just.
And everybody see where I got it, 6.5 right now, 1.5 here, that brings us to 5 million, and again, it's not going to be near, nowhere near that.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, we're not going to have, we have three meetings posted for next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and if I'm hearing you correctly, we're not going to have any more information from you because you're still waiting to, or you're working with others to develop that number for any of those meetings.
Yes, I mean, my feeling is to start making decisions now on some of these, the ones that we're comfortable with, I mean, revenue increases, to me, that's something we have to do, you know, I don't know if you want to start taking some of these now, but we can start making decisions because it's not, it's not going to be anywhere near these numbers, so we have to start making tough decisions on this. All set, Mr. Amico?
Through the chair of the committee, I do agree in this case, not that they're easier decisions, but they're non-personnel decisions, such as the revenue increases, I'd move forward to accept those at this point.
Good to hear.
Sorry about that, I would, I would move to make a motion to deduct those, or add those revenue increases at this point, if you want to go line item by line item, we can, or take them all at once, but I do agree, we should probably look at non-personnel deductions or increases at this point.
Second.
You hear the motion for approval of the three proposed revenue increases, bus pass, athletic fees, and preschool tuition, the motion was made by Mr. Amico, seconded by Mr. Arnottis, on the motion, Mr. Huckman?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Amico, we, I don't think we've raised the transportation fee in several years, I can't recall the last time we did increase the transportation fee, so, not that I'm, or any of us are ever in favor of increasing fees, but the realities of this budget and expenses are what they are, same thing with preschool tuition, I know we took an in-depth look at this last year or the year before, and there was some minor increase, I think it was $25, that we increased tuition for preschool, and when we looked at these preschool tuition numbers, the private sector was much higher for preschool than what was being charged in our preschool program, so I'm okay with that, too. The one fee that I am a little concerned about, and it's been somewhat of a problem for me for a long time, are athletic fees, and for a couple of reasons, one is, you know, these are extracurricular activities that our kids participate in and represent our city, represent our school, these are activities that we want to encourage our student athletes to participate in, and I'm not opposed to fees necessarily for athletics, it's the manner in which the fee is charged, and what I mean by that is that there are some sports that are incredibly expensive, and there are some sports that are incredibly inexpensive, so the tennis program or most track programs have very little by way of either equipment or expenses, and there are some big, bigger, more expensive programs like hockey, like football, programs that I almost wish we, I don't almost, I do wish we had a tiered athletic fee, so that some of the fee, or the fees that are associated with those programs can be allocated to the participants of those programs, and not spread through all the other programs which may make a program unaffordable for a runner or for someone else who's not able to absorb, it's only a $25 increase, but it's a $25 increase, you know, the cost of running the hockey program, when I last looked at this, and I don't mean to pick on hockey, it just happens to be the most expensive sport, primarily because of ice time and things like that, I want to say was, you know, 1,300, $1,400 for the season, and the track program was about $110 or $105 for the season, and, you know, we have, I believe last I looked, hundreds of kids that participate in track, and that kind of absorbs some of the user fee or the expenses for, and football was about $700 or $800 per student athlete that played in the program, and they're all getting charged the same user fee, and students who come into the high school, who've played hockey in their youth, are paying significantly higher than $175 to play hockey for whatever youth hockey program that they're playing for, they expect it, you don't play hockey and expect to pay $175 for a season as a, you know, 10, 11, or 12-year-old, it's just one of those sports that's expensive, and parents understand that, and kids that get involved with that sport in particular, have parents who are going in with their eyes open and understand that they're going to be paying a lot of money to play that sport, and I don't mean to use track as an example, or tennis as an example, but those are sports that don't have a lot of cost, and we have free tennis courts all over the city, all over the state, all over the country, you know, you get a tennis racket, a can of tennis balls, and you play tennis, you know, so there's going to be a referee or an umpire for a tennis match in a high school level, but that's about the extent of the expense, plus transportation, and, you know, I just hate to see that we're increasing the user fee for students in sports that are already costing less than the user fee is now before we set this increase, so, that's the only long-winded, I guess, explanation as to why I have a little problem with increasing the athletic user fee, or those problems with increasing the athletic fee, it is something that, you know, again, we want to encourage student athletes, we all want to see kids after school out there on a court or whatever field that they're playing on, and I just hope that, even though it's only $25, I hope it's not a disincentive, I know many of us are involved in youth sports around the city as it is, and we all have student athletes, you know, before they get to high school who can't afford user fees for some of those programs, and there's always ways in which we accommodate those athletes to ensure that they're going to participate and not be excluded, and I don't know that we have that at the high school, I think it's, you pay or you don't play, I think that's about it, I don't think there's any scholarship opportunity like there might be in, whether it be softball, or Little League, or PBA, or, you know, other organizations around the city, and I just don't want to discourage students from being able to participate in athletics.
Good points, Mr. Huckman, I will say, those students that qualify for free and reduced lunch, which is about 40%, they do not pay athletic fees.
Thank you for that information, thank you.
Any other comments or thoughts at this time? We have a meeting set up for next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Motion.
Motion on the floor is, yes, it is, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Huckman?
No.
Mr. Huckman?
No.
No.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
We're going to have a lot of meetings.
Through the chair, is there, is there any way, getting back to my question earlier?
Is there, is there any way, getting back to my question earlier, is it a formula error, or is it a description error? Because, going back to that special education page, I mean, if the formula's incorrect, I mean, that's, according to my calculation, that's a hundred thousand dollars right, right there, and I would just, in general, if you look at, um...
Mr. Olympia, what tab are you at?
I'm at seventeen.
Thank you.
On the second page, if you look at, uh, the speech therapist, and if you just take the first one, there's a full-time equivalent, and the salary there, then the second person is a point six oh, and they have the same exact salary.
It's not a formula, they're hand keyed in there.
Okay, so...
So, we gotta go through them.
So, I mean, right there is, could potentially be a hundred thousand dollars.
I suspect that's the FTE, not the salary.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to, that's good to know. We're still not gonna get the five million dollars. For Christ's sake. We gotta protect bodies. Thank you.
I'll leave it up to the committee. Uh, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, um, accept, accept the recommendation for, of the superintendent for the preschool tuition increase.
You've heard the motion, you have this one, they didn't wanna take one by one. So, it'd be, uh, motion made by Mr. Hockman to, um, follow the recommendation of the superintendent relative to the preschool tuition increase, seconded by Mrs. Capender. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
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 We just shortened our meeting times.
It's like, geez.
Mr. Chairman?
Twenty-five bucks.
Could I make, could I make a motion to reconsider? I, I apologize, when we were voting, I thought we were voting on all three, the bus pass, the athletic fees, and the preschool tuition together.
We were.
Um, could we?
We were.
We did.
Yeah, the first motion was for all three.
Okay.
And then Mr. Hockman broke them down to do the one.
Okay, thank you, I apologize.
Okay, um... Mr. Arnotis?
I'll make a motion to increase the bus pass fee, follow the recommendations.
Second.
Okay, heard the motion by Mr. Arnotis, to follow the recommendation of the superintendent relative to the bus pass increase, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote?
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
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 Okay. Okay. What did you vote? Did you vote yes or no? Well, I'm a yes if it, but did you vote yes or no? You voted yes?
No, it was forty-two.
That was forty-two.
Forty-two.
Yeah.
And Dunn?
Dunn.
Mrs. Dunn said yes.
Oh.
Yes. Okay, um, thank you, uh, for those motions, and, um, Mr. Amico, did you have your hand up? Was there a...
I did not.
Okay, any other items, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion, even though it's not in this consideration, to increase the bus pass for one-way transportation by twenty-five dollars per pass.
I'll second that.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman to increase the, uh, bus pass for one-way, uh, students, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
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 Yeah, that'll be an additional figure.
I have a line that's correct.
Mrs. Dunn?
I will also make a motion to increase the athletic fees by, uh, twenty-five dollars as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn for, to follow the recommendation of the superintendent for the athletic fee, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. Roll call vote?
Mr. Hockman?
No.
Yes.
No. Yes.
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 Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just as a point of information, and it's not a budgetary item, but I would like for the school committee, um, for school committee education to just receive a document giving us, uh, the details of the cost of membership of each of the booster clubs which accompany those athletic teams. If we could have that information, I think it would help us when we're making our decisions regarding the charges for the athletic fees. Thank you.
Uh, the, one item I didn't wanna, uh, speak to that I should've mentioned when, um, Ms. Murtagh was speaking, was the intermurals. Um, we were looking to, uh, potentially work that into our park and recreation budget and, and maybe look for some assistance with that, so, um... And the elementary extracurriculars as well. So, we're looking maybe get some assistance, uh, on the city side with those. Mr. Hockman?
Couple of things. One, to that point, if I may, uh, my preference would be to see that revenue come in through our budget and keep these lines in our budget, uh, if the park and recs are able to absorb it and reduce their budget in, in a comparable manner, so that we can receive that funds. I, my preference would be to keep them.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you, I'm glad you stated that.
Yeah.
Um, we can give that some thought, that's not a decision we have to make now, but we, I was actually trying to figure out ways to...
Keep it, I know.
Yeah, and, um...
I understand what you're trying to do, and I, I appreciate it, I'm not...
Try to put some more on the city side, to try to free up money on the school side, that's what I was...
Yeah, no, I got you. Um, if I can, on, to, to, through you to Ms. Murtagh, the high school teachers that you, um, have five FTEs, are those through attrition?
No, not all of them, one or two, but, no. If, we're looking at enrollments and tallies as we schedule students.
Do you, do you have an idea as to when we would have a better understanding?
Hopefully by next week.
Okay.
I will have students in better places for next year scheduling.
Okay. Um, and the vocational director line, are we anticipating maintaining the current interim vocational director, is that your expectation?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, I'm gonna make a motion to follow the recommendation regarding the vocational director, um, to remain at a part-time, point six FTEs, is that what you're looking for?
Um, actually, from a point four to a point six.
Make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent regarding the vocational director.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico. On the motion, Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't be supporting that, and I'll tell you why. Um, all along, I have been hoping we would have a full-time vocational director, because I honestly believe that, uh, we have a great need for vocational training at the high school. Our CTE program is heavily in demand by the students. They want to be able to learn and to work with their hands. This does go hand in hand with the new vocational school, because you have students who are looking for vocational training. When, when the mayor and I were fighting against going into a regional vocational school, at that time, I presented to the city council that there were over five hundred students enrolled in CTE programs in Peabody, that we could certainly support our own vocational program, because that was all we could handle at that time, were five hundred, and expansion of CTE in Peabody would've been perfect. Now that we have membership in the regional vocational school, we have two-hundred-and-eighty-nine students enrolled at the vocational school, and that number's gonna stay pretty steady. We still have over five hundred students at Peabody Veterans Memorial High School who are taking CTE programs. And over the last two years, I've been advocating, and we were planning on increasing the CTE offerings. We were going to have a, uh, police, a law enforcement program, we were going to have another one, and I can't remember whether it was robotics or computer, computer...
Programming.
Programming. In this day and age, those are really needed, the workforce, workforce, uh, programs encourage those. If we had those programs in place, we would be accommodating numerous students in our program. We know that students are leaving the high school, not only to go to the other schools in the area, but also to go to the vocational school, and this, in all, in all aspects, education is a competitive, it's a competitive world. And if you wanna people, keep people coming, you need to make sure that you're accommodating them and find out what their desires are. We held off on putting those new programs in because we were waiting for a new director to be hired. Now, not only will we put that off, I know we will, we can't do it without a director. I don't even know if chapter seventy-four, which is vocational funding, will cover the cost of a part-time vocational director. And I firmly believe this is a step backwards. We are all trying to work to improve the product, the experience of our students at the high school, we're trying to improve it so that we can encourage our residents to send their children to Peabody Veterans Memorial High School because of all the offerings we have, and I believe that putting this off and holding off on this, while budgetarily I understand this, I think this is really a step backwards. Um, we've been in a holding pattern now for over three years, and it is not going to get any better unless we improve that portion of the high school, uh, program that's offered at PB MHS. So I will not be supporting that, for those reasons.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn, and, you know, we're gonna be working on our budget here quite a bit over the next, uh, few weeks. Um, one item that I want to, to get at and update, uh, the committee on is progress we've made with the Essex Tech in terms of opportunities for our students moving forward.
Oh, they, they are...
Yeah.
They are...
And, yeah, we've made real progress on coming up with, uh, options for our students, um, over at the Essex Tech, so, um, I think we're actually adding point four to point six in terms of additional hours for her, uh, but your point is well-made, and, um, but I think, after we kind of get through some of these budget items, I think the next topic will be specifically vocational opportunities and additional partnerships that I think we're on the road to making with the Essex Tech to allow some of our students that are here at the Peabody, at Peabody High School to go over for training, uh, at their school. I know, uh, Superintendent Murtagh and her team are working on scheduling and some other opportunities, there'll be transportation issues that we'll have to discuss, um, but I think there's some real opportunities, um, to allow for our students to, to go over to, um, the Essex Tech for some, for some vocational training and vocational opportunities. Um, so I would like to get at that next. We have a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
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 No.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Murtagh, can you, um, identify on this list any of the items in terms of reduction of staff that are as a result of attrition?
Um, yes, um, one of the high school, uh, none of the library parents, no attendance officer.
You're saying one of the high school teachers?
One.
I'm gonna make a motion to follow the recommendation with regarding to reduction of, uh, one FTE for a high school teacher.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Capender. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
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 And, um, due to retirement, um, in December, kindergarten coordinator.
So, if I may, through the chair.
Yes, please.
Um, I'm gonna need to personally, I'm, I'm gonna under, get a better understanding of what that's gonna look like, so maybe you can, at a future meeting, flesh that out a little bit as to how we function. Um, I understand that the kindergarten coordinator is retiring, or is looking to retire, and, um, how, how do we function as a district without replacing the kindergarten coordinator? And I, if you don't have an answer now, my, next meeting is perfectly fine, if you do, that's great.
Okay, that's great, I do have in my mind where those people would, what, the job responsibilities, where they would go, um, but I will give that to you next meeting.
Okay, so I don't wanna, my, I personally don't wanna consider that tonight. Are there any other, um, I think you mentioned one custodian?
The custo, yeah, I'm going down the list, yes, the custodian, uh, there'll be one. Um, and... That's it.
So, um, I understand populations within buildings change, and the high school population is, um, reducing and has been for the last couple of years, and I know a few years ago when we had some difficult budgets, we eliminated a cluster of the Higgins because the population in this building was lower, and now it's moved up to the high school, but buildings are still buildings, and custodians are a little different, um, I think, at least at this point for tonight, so, I'm gonna pass on that for now, and I think that those are the only positions that we're talking about, um, for attrition, that would be eliminated for attrition, right?
Correct, for the custodial positions.
One high school teacher?
Oh, and the custodian.
The kindergarten coordinator and one custodian?
Correct, as of right now.
Everything else, we're looking at bodies.
Correct. And those, just to let you know, those ELL positions are moving into a grant, so those are...
Before I get to that, the elimination of the substitute teachers, um, which is in the last page of this list?
Mm-hmm.
Would that be for fiscal year twenty nineteen, or fiscal year twenty twenty? Twenty, both? And, and your, your understanding is that this is some, something that's, um, doable through conversations with, uh, staff up at the high school and so forth?
Doable, in, in conversations.
So, I'm gonna make a motion to follow the recommendation of the administration regarding the elimination of high school substitutes.
Second.
From, from, they get the signature dates, May twentieth to June thirtieth?
From May, if I could just, um, Mr. Hockman, the motion would be from, from May twentieth to April, uh, to June thirtieth.
That, that's what we're voting on now, I'd like to see maybe, and I'll make that motion, but I would maybe like to see this fleshed out a little bit more for fiscal year twenty twenty, since the population is decreasing, um, and we are potentially reducing the number of classes offered, if that's what we're doing, there may be some opportunity to reduce that line generally for the fiscal year, but the motion is just for the period from May twenty through June thirty.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hockman. Heard the motion seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
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 Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you. Just a request for some information, we, we're gonna talk about the custodians, um, at a later date, but could we have the square footage of the buildings for each of the, of the, uh, the tent schools? Cause the custodians have to take care of, um, you know, specific size buildings, and I, I do remember when we had put three custodians at the Carroll and at the Brown, it was for a specific reason, because of the size and because of the systems in the school, so, I'd, I'd just like to see what the sizes have.
Did you wanna mention about that? Not, not having events after this, there.
Sure. Um, something else that, um, my team came up with that I thought was, um, thoughtful and very creative.
There may be some opportunity to reduce that line generally for the fiscal year. But the motion is just for the period from May 20 through June 30.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Huckman. You've heard the motion seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
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 Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you. Just a request for some information. We're going to talk about the custodians at a later date, but could we have the square footage of the buildings for each of the, of the, the tent schools? Because the custodians have to take care of, you know, specific size buildings. And I do remember when we had put three custodians at the Carroll and at the Brown, it was for a specific reason, because of the size and because of the systems in the school. So I'd, I'd just like to see what the sizes have.
Did you want to mention about that? Not having events after this, though.
Sure. Something else that my team came up with that I thought was thoughtful and very creative is that the Higgins and the high school would be utilized for all after-school programming, night programming, weekend programming, everything programming. And the elementary schools would only stay open, all elementary schools, open to seven o'clock. Cutting down on costs and cleanup and them being able to, the custodians being able to get into classrooms quicker, getting into the gym, getting into the cafeteria and cleaning those more quickly and more efficiently than if we had program after program after program in there.
Mrs. Dunn?
We did that once before.
Because I think the two schools primarily that are being used after, after seven is the Carroll and the Brown?
Correct.
Right, because they're the only ones that are open?
Yeah, they're the only ones that are open. So that's, yeah.
What time does the after-school program end in the elementary schools?
Six, at all of them.
Six. So that leaves the custodian one hour to finish up.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Does there need to be a vote on the, moving the ESL teachers to the Title I grant? Does that require a vote?
The ELL teachers.
The ELL teachers that just being moved from the operational budget to the Title I grant? I'm thinking that, that we should vote on that, just to make sure we're clear that those teachers are staying. Mr. Amico?
I'll make a motion to follow the recommendation of the administration.
Second.
You've heard the motion from Mr. Amico to follow the recommendation of the superintendent relative to moving the ESL teachers, their salaries to the Title I grant, seconded by Mr. On Notice. On that motion, Mr. Huckman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to, to either Ms. Murtagh or Mr. LaFleur. So it, it looks like we're looking to shift about $130,000 of salary onto the ELL grant. At what cost does that come? So it's, we, we don't have 130,000 free dollars in ELL, on the ELL grant, on the Title I grant. What, what are we eliminating?
We have to wait for appropriation, but I know we'll get some funding to be able to fund this. We could be looking at tutors, we could be looking at different things in the Title I grant to shift.
So therein lies my problem with this, and I don't, I'm a big opponent of putting salaries into grants that aren't already there. It's, and I understand the mayor's thought on this. It seems like an easy shift, where we're going to keep the two ELL teachers and just reappropriate how we pay, three?
It's three.
Three, I'm sorry.
Sarge, I guess.
I'm sorry, so three, so I'm-
Hundred ninety-one thousand.
Hundred ninety-one thousand, thank you, Ms. Dunn. We're going to shift how we appropriate 191,000, but we're going to wind up losing tier-two supports and other things that I don't think we can afford to lose at this point. It may be something that we need to consider on May 22nd or 23rd, but on April 30th, I, I ask the committee to act with a little more caution when it comes to this. It's not as clear and clean-cut as it appears on paper.
Good point. Mr. Amico?
I'll withdraw.
Yep.
Motion.
Okay. We'll hold that. That's a good point. Mrs. Dunn?
It's a question on ELL. Are there any specific grants for ELL? If, if we're just, if we're moving three teachers onto the Title I grant, we have more than three ELL teachers in the system.
Mm-hmm.
What, is, is it Title II? Which title pays?
Title III is the ELL, but that's for additional supports. We utilize that for before and after-school program, programming. We utilize that for summer school, addition supplemental support. For moving a title, to Title I, into the Title I grant funding, is we can, we can't sup, we can supplement, not supplant. So if there's two, three, two ELL teachers or three ELL teachers at one building, we can put one in the grant and two in operating. So it's supplementing, not supplanting. So that's what we're looking to do.
If I may, what, how much was our Title I grant this year?
I want to say 897,000. But I could, I will, yeah.
Eight, eight ninety-seven?
Yeah.
Okay. And that, that's been covering some, like math tutoring and reading tutoring at the elementary levels, right?
Correct.
Is there any type, these ELL teachers, are they at the elementary level?
The ELLs, yes. Because that's only where Title I is, at the elementary level, correct.
Right. Is there any chance that the high school in Higgins will qualify for Title I status?
That all depends on enrollment, percentage of economically disadvantaged, and also a lot of the times, and we talk about this all the time, is that our need goes up, but the money in the grant does not go up. So that's why we have always stayed at the elementary level at this point, because we, last year we were looking at one more elementary to go, but we didn't, they have to have a certain amount of money per pupil, and we weren't there. We didn't have enough money to get there.
And how does the number get determined? Like, how, how does the state or the federal government know how many people qualify us, qualify PBD for Title I? How, how do they figure that out?
So it's based on enrollment and need. And the highest need school is the one that gets the most supplemental funds, and then it goes down from there.
And is it need based on their educational capabilities or their address or?
We go by economically disadvantaged in the percentage of need. And, and we are school-wide, so we can see any student. It doesn't matter.
So is it from the free and reuse lunch paperwork that gets turned back in?
Correct.
Okay. All right. We always have an issue with that at the upper grades.
Fiscal nineteen amount is 874,700.
Okay, thank you.
I like mine a bit a bit.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you were really close, yeah. And if we could get more people to, to participate in filling out that paperwork, that we might have better, more accurate information that might help us get more of the grant funding?
Much gets put into SIMS data, everything that we, goes into the database, and it uploads to the state.
Okay. I would like to see us encourage people and educate them on the fact that if they fill out that paperwork, that it can be very, very helpful to, not only to their own child, but just to the whole city as well.
Well, we have another good idea coming, that I'd like to share good news at some point.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. On Notice?
Yeah, thank you. I'll jump to the clerical section on the recommendations, if we want to have that discussion right now. I would be comfortable making that motion to reduce two central office clerks, both to nineteen and a half hours each. I don't know if anyone has any opinions on that before I make that motion.
I'll second it for discussion.
Motion made by Mr. On Notice, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Open it up for discussion, Mr. Huckman?
Yeah. Hmm, where do I begin? I guess what is, through the chair to, again, maybe Mr. Farrell? What, what does this look like now? What are we reducing from to nineteen and a half hours? Yeah, I, I think this is-
Can we hold, Mr. On Notice? Could you hold that one?
Absolutely.
Let's get some additional information. Yeah, I think we need some additional information on that.
While you've recognized me and I have the floor, I think I'm going to need a little more information on that. I also, I previously mentioned the kindergarten, the kindergarten coordinator. Ms., Ms. Dunn has already brought up the custodians and square footage. You know, maybe a little more information on where we're looking to reduce two elementary teachers. I talked earlier about what class sizes look like, so that information, I, I imagine, will be coming. I know Ms. Dunn mentioned the librarian in this building, something I, I need a lot of information on, that, that's going to be a tough one to swallow, although I think a lot of these are. And then maybe the high school teachers, you know, what are we looking at in terms of, are we eliminating classes or are we just consolidating departments or the attendance paraprofessional? Again, where does that, how does that get absorbed? How do, I mean, it's a process that we, that we need completed, the function still needs to occur. How does it get absorbed? Just kind of a, a bigger picture as to how we accomplish the, the goal without, with the reductions that are before us. And if I may, just skip over to the Title I conversation. And I don't know if Mr. LaFleur has historic information on Title I, but my understanding is that it really doesn't deviate historically. The number that we received today, I think you said 800-
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four thousand is about the same amount we received last fiscal year and about the same amount we received the fiscal year before that.
It has been trending downward.
Yeah.
A couple of percentage points a year.
Yeah.
But if the district itself qualifies in a different way, it could go up.
Okay. So I did want to just make that point and, for, for the mayor, in his efforts before the city council, while this grant, which has been supporting necessary programs throughout our district, goes down or remains stagnant, the cost of maintaining the people who are working for us goes up contractually. We're required to pay them more money, so we're not able to fund as much through the grant. So it's not as if we're, we have that opportunity. If, I, I would think that if the district had an opportunity to receive more Title I funding, we would. But we have to supplement some of the staff, like these three teachers, because the grant doesn't increase. The grant doesn't go up, but their salaries do. And, you know, we now have, I believe it's five of our, of our elementary schools qualified for Title I grants. So the same grant block is being spread throughout larger populations in larger geographic areas, so it's more difficult to share personnel, to get people to go from building to building and efficiently provide the services that these kids need. So, I mean, there's, there's some of that, too, that drives the six and a half million. It's not all of it, but it's some of it. I just want to, I, I know you're aware of all the great things that our staff does, but there's limitations that we as a district have in terms of bringing revenue in as well, and we still need to provide the services that, and I agree with Ms. Dunn on that point, that are, are less than adequate. We, we need to provide more services in a whole host of areas. I remember talking, I won't, I won't get into some of my history with Dr. Burnett when I first got on this committee about really putting a vision on a budget and really putting a number out there that would probably blow the mind off of all the people listening. And I know you share that vision, Mr. Mayor, and you have a, a different job, and your job is broader than our job in terms of the city. But there's a vision out there as to how we really provide services that are necessary, that are, that are real. And, you know, we've talked about the elimination of programs before, you know, and that's one of the conversations we're going to have about foreign languages. Once it's gone, it's gone. We don't have, unfortunately, we don't have good budgets. We, we don't have this windfall that comes to us that allows us to revitalize programs that are gone. We, we don't, I remember when I first got here, we lost a bleacher in the football field, and Ms. Dunn standing on her head saying, "We're never getting that bleacher back." And it's 10 years later, we don't have that bleacher back.
Nope.
And I don't think we're going to. And I, you know, we all understand the limitations that, that exist out, out there, and they're real. But, and I, I just maybe I'm making more of a speech than I should, but just let's be cautious with eliminating programs. We gotta, we gotta really be thoughtful, because once they're gone, they're just not coming back. And, and I know that we have a lot of friends over at the city council who've been here and worked hard here, and they work hard now, and they understand that, too. And I know the mayor's been here for a long time, and he has a vested interest in the whole city, and he's doing a great job. He's, he's doing a lot of good things for the city. But it's our job to advocate for students. It's our job to fight for kids. And there may be some unpleasant trees that come out of this, but it's a fight worth fighting.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. And I certainly think that, you know, education, our school system now, it's education and social services. It's a combination of the two, and that's what's changed, I think dramatically over the last couple decades, where it's become a lot more of social services and more is put on our teachers and administrators. And that puts more of a challenge on us to try to figure out where to, where to put the appropriate resources.
And I, and I didn't say any of that to, I hope you didn't take offense at that, Mr. Mayor. I know you're-
Oh, no, no.
-pro-education, and I know you understand what I'm saying.
Yep.
We got a lot of people out there. Some reporters are going to pick up this tape and view it and write an article, and it's going to, you know, look to capture a headline about a $6.5 million increase. And we go through it every year, and it, it's frustrating for all of us, because we're not here to take anything away from our taxpayers. We're not here to advocate for irresponsible spending. We're all conscious of that. We're all aware of, of the impact that our decisions have on homeowners and what our streets look like and sidewalks look like, and as a result of decisions that we make indirectly. But we're, we're not, we, we never, in my 10 years with the people I've worked with here, never taken any of that lightly. They're just, you know, sometimes I think people just need to hear it.
And certainly what I speak to often is, you know, the investment that we've made that doesn't show up in the operational budget. Certainly this brand-new middle school, where now we're moving forward, hopefully, over the next several years with a new high school. And those costs do not show up here. Those are part of our debt service, which has increased because of those investments, not to mention just the individual investments at the different school. I think a lot of times my job is buildings and trying to make the buildings work and trying to advocate with the MSBA, Mass. School Building Authority, to get money for our schools. Thankfully, we're able to get the Welch School. We've had good projects at the Burke School, the McCarthy School, Welch previously, high school roof and things. But those do not show up here. Those are part of our debt service, which has risen because of those investments. So I always think of those, quite frankly, too, as investments in education as well that don't show up on these sheets, but are also significant investments that we've made. Never mind, which I'm, one of the most, things I'm most proud of is the technology investment with our Chromebook Initiative, which we are one of the very few cities and towns, and I speak to this often, that actually can state that every student from sixth to 12th grade has their own individual Chromebook. So those type of investments, too, we've made, so. But these are difficult. It's going to be very challenging, and we're going to have to work our way through it gradually and try to make these difficult decisions and always, we always have the best of our kids in mind. I have one going into the high school next year. I'll have one in the middle school, and I have one in an elementary school. So certainly, I, I'm invested not only as a mayor, but as a parent, and that's why these are always very difficult. But we'll just continue to work our way through it. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, budget time is always frustrating. It, it really is. But I will say, it has been very good working with you and moving forward with the improvements in the school district, and, and I can never thank you enough for the amount of money that you've fought for and got for our schools. This one is really very difficult, because I honestly feel this is, and this is just the beginning. This is a, a step backwards in many areas. Before I came here, I had the chance to see a headline, and it was the 25 top high schools in the New England area by U.S. News &amp; World Report. And I remember when PBD Veterans Memorial High School was in the top 1,000. And of course, I checked the list, and I knew we weren't going to make it. I'm still shooting for that, and I don't know how many more years it would take to get our high school recognized or our whole school district recognized. But I've described life on the school committee to new members as it's like a game of whack-a-mole. You get your head up, you think you're doing okay, and bam, it comes down again, and you're back where you started. And that is why this is so frustrating. I'm going to give you pep talk right now. You go to that city council, and you explain to them that there is a groundswell of support among the people of PBD who understand the value of education and how important it really is to everything in this city. And I know it's expensive. And we cut a lot of things to try to make a budget that's, that's reasonable. There, there is no, there's no glamour in these. You just talked about how proud you are of that Chromebook Initiative, and I'm, I'm with you. I think it's wonderful. We're going to cut the technology integration specialist. Whack-a-mole. This city is finally together and, and really willing to- among the people of PBD who understand the value of education and how important it really is to everything in this city. And I know it's expensive. And we cut a lot of things to try to make a budget that's reasonable. There is no, there's no glamour in these. You just talked about how proud you are of that Chromebook Initiative, and I'm with you. I think it's wonderful. We're going to cut the technology integration specialist. Whack-a-mole. This city is finally together and really willing to fight for education, because it will help in so many areas in the community. I don't want to see taxes going sky-high, and I understand that formula about the forty per one million. But I think people are finally starting to understand that taxes are an investment, and they do want to make things better. And we need the city council to help us as well. We really do, because every year, we go before them with our budget. And we are only a piece of the full city. But I do think that they need to understand how important this year is, because we really have been making some great strides in moving forward. And if we're going to improve the high school, we can't do these cuts. There are adjustments to be made, I admit it, but we have got to make sure that we... Wait, athletics, you guys understand sports. Okay. The farm league, the elementary schools, we can't cut the heart out of those. We're going to cut elementary instrumental music. Going forward, that's like cutting Little League and then praying that the Tanners are going to win a championship. Any of these cuts affects every stage, not immediately. It could be nine, 10, or 11, or 12 years later. But we only get one shot at each grade with these kids, and this money is really important. And I know it's a hard, hard increase, and I know we're going to cut a lot of different things. But you go into the city council and tell them they really need to support the schools, just like they support all the other things in the city. I'm not trying to take anything away from them, but this is really important right now. These cuts are going to be bigger, because I know this is only a million right here, and we've got to cut more.
Mrs. Dunn, these are the ones that are... Well, these are the early proposals.
I know. I'm waiting for another whack-a-mole.
I hope you are correct in stating that there is a significant groundswell of support for investment in education.
I think there is.
I'm not sure if that's true, and I hope it is.
It's true. It's true.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Mrs. Dunn, very well said. Thank you. I'd like to look at this in a different angle and question a couple of increases that I see in the budget, to try to understand those, maybe go a different way. And one of the line items that I'm looking at is in athletics under the salary for coaches. So the FTEs has not increased, but there is a $10,880 increase, which I'm wondering where that came from. I do believe we voted on coaches raises one year, but not since. The FTE did not increase, so I was just wondering if you could explain that.
Sixteen.
Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter, can you ask your question again? I'm sorry.
The salary coaches line, second from the top.
Do you see that?
Oh, thank you.
Oh, the increase there, okay. So what we're proposing is for the increase of $500 for the Higgins, so they get a $500 stipend. They don't receive anything right now, so you added that in there. Oh, I didn't realize that. You added that in there. That's what that is. That's the increase.
The Higgins, so the athletics, the coaches at the Higgins. So that's in this line item. That's what that is.
Mm-hmm.
And currently, where are we at now with that? There's none?
None, zero.
Okay. The other increase that I wanted to talk about was contractual services. This is the equipment, the reconditioning of the field and maintenance.
Yes.
And there's an increase of $44,000 for that. Could you just tell me what that's for? I see it says reconditioning field maintenance, but could you tell me what and why it would be $44,000?
That is a level service, and that would be the field, the football field in...
There it is.
Can't read it, so we can hear it.
There is a substantial list here. I don't know if you want to go through it all.
All for the turf field?
Yes, for the turf field, correct.
All right. Let's see that.
That's something I'd be willing to let the rec department join in on.
Turf maintenance is, one line is $6,000.
Turf maintenance.
It's what? I'm sorry.
It's $6,000. What Mr. Bua did is he broke out everything by sport for us. So the detail is behind the summary page.
So that $44,000 is not just turf field?
Just turf, no. I don't have your, I can't, I don't know, I can't see it. Sorry.
It's at the top of that list. It's the first account. Right there.
Okay, reconditioning. So, oh, it's the officials. It's the, so we had him...
So it's contractual and...
Correct. So we had him break it out, see what it is. The fall officials, the winter officials, the spring officials, the rentals, and the field maintenance.
That's all of it?
That's all of that into one combined number.
And why was there such an increase?
I don't really think you had proper numbers last year. I had to break it out by sport, so everything's listed there by official.
And the cost of the official.
The cost.
So those officials, and that's maintenance, and everything all in one line, and, okay.
When you flip that page, all the detail is right behind it.
That's what that is for that, okay.
Ms. Carpenter, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lepio.
Yes, through the chair. Keeping on that theme, tab nineteen under maintenance. There are significant increases in maintenance. And I understand you broke out the detail on the repairs, which is budgeted for $262,000. Are some of these maintenance contracts?
Some are.
Okay. And then, then the supplies went from, let's say, I'll call it $54,000 to $117,000. Was the nineteen number not a good number?
The nineteen number was cut by fifty percent?
Forty-seven percent.
So this, so...
So we've kind of restored what we needed to maintain the infrastructure.
Okay.
That deficit for nineteen is part of the supplemental as well, if you would call it.
Okay. Great. And let's see. And then under tab twenty-nine for technology, under contractual services, there's an increase of $165,000. Is that...
Sorry, my computer went dead.
Right here, right here.
Was nineteen cut as well?
No, we brought some things into the technology budget from other departments. There were some items in the curriculum department that should not have been there, so I moved them to where they should be in technology.
Okay.
So it was a shift in line item, not price.
Okay. And then getting back to tab seventeen with special education.
Yep.
I noticed an increase in legal fees from $55,000 to $88,000. Is that just for an anticipated increase in caseload?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Our present council, are they on the South Shore?
Yes.
Okay. Do they charge for travel time coming back and forth?
I can check for you. I'm not sure about that.
Because, you know, as the special education area becomes more complex and there's more issues that might pop up, I don't know, something to look at down the road, maybe a North Shore type of firm, especially if they're charging for travel time. So I can't imagine every time, you know, there's a lawyer that has to come to an IEP meeting or some type of hearing. Again, I'm just trying to, you know, take a look at some efficiencies and costs.
I'll double-check for you on mileage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lepio. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you. Just to follow up on Mr. Lepio's questioning, can we also find out, are those attorneys representing us in, you know, special education appeals, are they giving trainings to our staff? Are they writing policy or implementing any type of other, I don't want to say other than legal, but other than litigation support? If we could find out if that's included, that would be pertinent, too.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkman.
While we're at tab nineteen for maintenance, I see that we're increasing our FTEs for supervisor line one from one to two. And I see the breakdown for that in the sheets attached through the mayor to, I don't know if it's Mr. Farrell or Ms. Murtagh or Mr. LaFleur. Why?
It's a good question. I believe one of them, one of the supervisors is in our, in our budget, in our school budget, and the other one is still in our school budget, but it's now in the correct spot in the budget.
Okay. And my memory, when we went to a facilities coordinator with a more of a shared scheme with the city and the school department, was that custodians were going out of our budget and into the city side.
That has not occurred as of yet.
Okay. And I'll, I was gonna, I guess I'll wait for Ms. Carpenter to get back, but I'm prepared to make a motion to not follow the recommendation of the superintendent regarding the fifth-grade instrumental music teacher. I'll hold off on the motion until Ms. Carpenter returns. Yes, Mr. Arnold?
Just while we're waiting, real quick, do we know, I was doing a little math, but do we know what we've done so far? I know it's not $5 million.
You're not there yet either.
I think we're still the six figures right now. Hundred and fifty. Thank you.
While we are waiting, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, it's a hundred and fifty. Yes.
Can we get a little more insight on what the reductions of this, the software, MobiMax and TestWiz, those may be, I don't know enough about them to...
Okay.
To understand.
TestWiz is a program that Mr. Smoyer actually used in his school to run reports when we get the MCAS data back, but now that...
So is this to drill down into the, into the results? Is that what?
Yes. But now the state has what we use through the state. We utilize their programming, and it does similar things.
So we can accomplish the same result without this software?
Not to create assessments, but to get all the data that we need to be able to help our students move forward. So Mr. Smoyer is the only one that utilized it in his school, but they're not in the other schools.
Make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent regarding TestWiz.
All right. Second. Motion made by... Could you repeat your motion one more time?
Sure. I'm making a motion to follow the recommendation with the elimination of our usage of TestWiz at the recommendation of the superintendent.
That motion was made by Mr. Hawkman, seconded by Mr. Amico, and I am just going to hold the roll call until Mrs. Carpenter returns on there. Mrs. Dunn, sorry.
One more question. When I saw this, I immediately thought of Mr. Smoyer, because I know that the data that he has been able to pull together for his staff and with his staff using the TestWiz has been phenomenal. Will the state be backing off on any of the data that they're requiring from our schools?
I don't know about that, Ms. Dunn, but we do use Edward Analytics right now, and it's part of what the, in our portal, we do get that information. I would like that, but I don't know if that's going to be true anytime soon.
Okay.
But we're able to get all that data in Edward Analytics.
It does lead me to another question, and it might be from Mr. LaFleur, but do we have a budget line that shows the cost, like, okay, the MCAS test, does the state send us that for free, or do we have to pay for the test?
We don't have to pay for the test.
We don't have to pay for it. All right, then. Kills that idea. I was going to have you cut, we had all about to cut that from the budget. Send them the bill. Oh, gosh, I really, I really have been trying to think of that for a while, about what is the true cost.
Well, if I may on that point, but there are instructional methods and all sorts of costs that go along with administering the test that, you know, in a perfect world could be utilized for special ed services or for socio-emotional, or depression, or anxiety, or anything else that we see in our schools every day. So, I mean, you're correct in that, yeah, the cost, there isn't a cost there, but there certainly is a cost. It's paid ahead of time.
We could calculate the personnel cost of all the teachers, the guidance counselors, the people who have to administer the test, who have to put it back together. I mean, it's a, it's a very stringent policy as far as how you wrap the thing and who unwraps it and what time of day you can open the test. And it drives, it drives the scheduling of our staff. Okay, it's off-topic, but let's figure that out someday, and we'll just send the bill to Austin. But actually, I think people should see what that costs, too. The unfunded mandates by the state and the federal government are driving this budget, and that's one of the issues that's a real big problem. And I think we ought to do up a whole slip of paper that's probably going to be 12 feet long and list, here is what you're paying for, because we were ordered by the feds or by the state, groups of people who have no concept of what this actually costs, and then let the chips fall where they may. I'm in a mad mood right now, so let's go for it.
Well, that, I mean, I could speak incredibly long about all the mandates that get put on cities and towns that leave us with little alternatives but to have these type of discussions. So, yeah, I mean, that's the reality we're in. I mean, we just got transferred $500,000 that now we have to pay on the homeless transportation.
That's one of those lines I'm...
So there was one thing we weren't expecting, the law changes, what, two months ago, and now we owe $500,000 for homeless, homeless and foster care transportation. So, I mean, that just, that's, happens all the time to cities and towns, so.
Yes, regeneration, yeah.
Mr. Hawkman?
We do, we do have a motion. In a second.
Yes, we do.
We were waiting to take a vote.
Okay. Is this on the instrumental?
No, no. It's on TestWiz.
Oh, TestWiz, okay. Was it, who, do you have that?
Leanne, would you mind reading it back if you, if you may? Just so Ms. Carpenter and Mr.?
Mr. Hawkman, we move to follow the recommendation of the administration to eliminate the usage of TestWiz slash...
Okay. Okay, heard the motion? On the motion, Mrs. Carpenter?
Just to clarify, that, that is for...
It's looking at data, but we get the information using Edward Analytics through the state, MCAS data, looking at data, but also looking at some local data as well. It was only utilized at Mr. Smoyer's school.
Okay. Thank you.
On that motion, Mr. Hawkman?
Yeah, so before we vote on it, is this something that we might be able to absorb through Title I?
Not if I don't get any more money from it.
No, no, I understand that, but I mean, this... No, no, I understand that. But I mean, this would be, this would be something that would be useful and appropriate to be charged under the grant of Title I, if there were 25, if the funds were available.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Do you want me to go to the next one? The Mobi Max? Do you want me to explain that?
The what?
Mobi Max.
Yes, why don't we take that up to a few, if we can?
Mobi Max is a supplemental program that can be used at home and school, and I call it the four core. We basically use it for English and math, sometimes science, that they can do enrichment or remediation. And I was able to utilize money in this year's, this year's money, to be able to purchase that for a whole year, for the entire district this year, under this year's budget. So it is money that I can put back in. It's $27,166. But it is something that each school utilizes, schools, it is a supplemental program that helps at school and at home for remediation or acceleration. So we have it for another year. It's just-
You start the floor, Mr. Hockman.
Thank you, thank you. So you've prepaid for school year 2019, 2020?
This was a purchasing maneuver. We're not disbanding the use of the software. We had contracts with this company at every school separately. So what we've done is Assistant Superintendent Secretary spent considerable time dealing with them to consolidate this into a district-level contract, which was much better cost, and we got them to cover the entire fiscal '20 year at the same time. So we'll bring this back on the fiscal '21 budget, but we won't need the funds in '20 for this purchase.
So the reduction of this line doesn't reduce the usage of this software?
That's correct.
Correct.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the super-
In fact, we're expanding.
These are, you guys got to give us the easy ones.
I'm sorry, I didn't explain it well. I'm like, we already have it. It's good.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the administration regarding the elimination of the Mobi Max.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I'm going to make a motion to maintain the instrumental music teacher at one FTE.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Okay. Any other items to discuss, or?
Mrs. Dunn?
It's just a question. For our next meeting, could we get the job description for the technology integration specialist?
Yes, that's, that's actually, let me see if I'm looking at, this is actually one that is not hired as of right now.
Yeah, this is an open position we haven't had before.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was something different.
Yep.
Okay.
That's the one that was in the contract.
Okay, so we just wouldn't be filling a position?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't had this position before.
Okay. We should have. But we're going to give it up. I'm going to make a motion and we take it out of the budget for this year.
Yeah. Can we, would you mind holding off on that, Ms. Dunn?
Sure. No problem. I'll withdraw the motion.
I mean, it was funded for a reason. I wanted to see the need that's, or the rationale for that before I'm willing to vote on.
Yeah, thank you. Good idea. Yeah, we'll hold that one. I think that's a good suggestion. Ms. Murtagh, I know you wanted to speak on a couple of things. Make sure we had all the information.
Yeah, it's important for me to make sure that I have everything that you need for next meeting, so can I just review? And please correct me if I don't have anything correct. I need the cost of each booster club for each sport.
Yes, I'd like that.
Square footage on each school building, class size enrollment, teachers per grade level per school, clerical at central office, more information. Yes.
That class size and teachers per grade level per school, can we do it present and expected for-
Yes.
Next fiscal year? Please.
Okay. Clerical at central office, more information. More information with the library media specialist. More information on the attendance para and who picks up the duties. Special education, attorney's fees, litigation, appeals. What else do they do? Do they do trainings other than litigation and appeals? And then I was just writing the integration technology specialist.
Oh, come on up.
And the mileage for the attorney. Yep, I have one.
Mrs. Dunn, and then go to Mr. On Notice.
It was also, and you probably would have done this as a matter of course anyway, but the high school teachers?
Oh, yes.
What's, what's the plan on those? One other thing.
Mr. On Notice, then we'll-
Yeah, I was just piggybacking on what Mrs. Dunn just said. The high school teachers, I believe they're foreign languages, so we're going to look at enrollment numbers for that, and then the same for the foreign language at Higgins. Those numbers.
Yep, the French teacher, yep.
Mrs. Carpenter, was there?
Yeah. Can we also get the figure for the one-way transportation increase?
Yes, I have that, too. Thank you.
Mr. Olympia?
I'm praying for a spreadsheet error.
Yes.
Me, too. We can't go to John's couch this year, can we?
We all good?
Yep. Any other, any other items?
What's the next meeting?
Monday.
Monday.
Motion to recess?
Motion to recess to Monday, 5:30.